Good evening. My name is Vince Noblet, President of Speedway Town Council. Today is September 12th, 2022, 7:00 PM, and I want to call this Town Council meeting to order. First on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just want to introduce the council tonight. On the far right is our town manager.
Good evening.
Grant Klinez. Next to Grant is Counselor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
Next to her is Counselor David Lindsay.
Good evening.
On my left, Council Bob Clutter.
Evening.
Our Town Clerk Treasurer, Jacob Blaisdale.
Hello, friends.
Next to Jacob is Gary Pedago.
Hi there.
And to my immediate left is Counselor Gary Regs, Vice President of the Council.
Hello.
It's time. Next is the approval of minutes. These minutes have been presented to the council. If there's no changes or corrections, they'll be approved as submitted by Town Clerk Hearing no changes, they will be approved. Next is the appointment to Speedway Police Commission. This is to fill an opening for Speedway Police Department Commissioner. We have an applicant that has been with the town since 1984 and has been working with the town. His name is Benny Grove, and basically would like to submit his name for approval by the council. Have a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we appoint Benny Grove, Bennett Grove, to the Speedway Police Commission.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. So any discussion?
Is he filling out then Ben, or I'm sorry, Ken Hall's term?
Correct.
That's correct. Just wanted to make sure.
Which I believe ends December of next year.
Okay.
Okay, if there's.
Make a motion, we close nominations.
Okay. Okay, given no other discussion on that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Benny Grove signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Would like to make a comment, if I could, on that. There were a lot of really good applicants, and Benny rose to the top, so did some others, but as it turned out, I think he was the candidate, obviously, that we supported, but there were some others that looked good on paper, and we knew of some of them. So thanks, everybody that did submit an interest in it.
Absolutely. Okay, next I'll move on to item four on the agenda, approval of the engineering selection for requests for proposals for the Crawfordsville Road Phase One pedestrian median and drainage improvements project. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, as you know, we did advertise for an RFP, request for proposals for engineering services for this project. This project has been funded through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, of which we are a member. We received $2,198,000 for the roughly $3 million project, 2.9, I believe, is the estimated cost. The road is obviously DPW's road, Crawfordsville Road, but these are pedestrian enhancements as well as some median treatments, some drainage improvement. I've got a drawing or an exhibit that Brian is going to show. So this is an exhibit showing the various parts of the project that have been proposed. I want to make it clear that this is a conceptual plan only at this point. These are not construction drawings. We will go through a design process, a discussion process with the council. We also need to approach DPW about this, get their input, and then also we will have several public hearing or public engagement-type meetings to get concerns and issues out there that people have concerns about. So if you look at this exhibit, the project boundaries are basically Cunningham Road, Parkwood, to the eastmost drive in the Speedway Shopping Center. You'll notice sidewalks are shown being installed on the north and south side, also extending west to the McDonald's entrance, and I can't read the name of that road and don't remember off the top of my head. You'll notice there is sidewalk proposed there. There is no sidewalk at this point. So it will connect several major areas on that thoroughfare for pedestrian facilities and get people to and from the restaurants and the shopping located on that north side. One of the other proposals is a mid-block crossing with potential of one or two traffic signals, either at the Thornton's entrance or that eastmost Speedway Supercenter Drive. That will help people cross that busy road. We all know, we see it daily, people trying to cross there, and it's just not safe. The other parts of the project as shown are some median treatments to potentially cut down on lefts out of the north side going to the east on Crawfordsville Road. I hope that wasn't confusing, but it will stop that. We do have some accidents, accident data showing that that's dangerous, that will eliminate some of that, and I think those stoplights will help immensely. We put out an RFP. We received five proposals back, DLZ, Beam Longness and Neff, First Engineering, Clark Dietz, and GAI. A review committee made up of myself, Jacob Blaisdale, Rob Wetnide, our Street Commissioner, and Jared, our Assistant Street Commissioner, reviewed those proposals and scored them in five areas: experience with MPO-funded projects, experience with the DPW doing projects with or for them, project understanding of what we were trying to accomplish, a proposed timeline of the design and estimated construction, because we have to meet a deadline, basically the fall of '25, to be able to go to construction, and then a fee which was given by all of the respondents. They were graded on a scale of one to five with a total of 25 points, one to five per category, 25 points total. You can see the sheet. The highest score was GAI. GAI did the study on this project a couple of years ago. That's what we used as a basis for the application. We felt they knew the project the best. We felt they did have good connections with DPW and MPO experience. Their fee, while not the lowest, was on the lower end of that range, and they provided all the information that we needed, including a timeline. So with that, staff would make a recommendation to the council to select GAI to go ahead and start this engineering process, which will take 18 months to do design, get approvals from DPW, as well as we'll need to buy some right-of-way. There will be some minor portions of right-of-way. My guess is some of it's permanent right-of-way, a majority of it will be temporary right-of-way, construction right-of-way, but we need to work through that process over the next 18 months, hopefully getting everything approved so that it can go to bid on schedule and then be constructed on schedule. We have found out, Jacob and I met with Krista Carlino, actually, we had a phone call with her, we didn't meet with her, no funding was put into the Indianapolis budget for us, but the amount put into the neighborhood improvement program, I can't remember the exact name, something like that, has been increased from their normal $1 million to $2 million. We are going to make application to that for approximately $350,000, which will be a good share of the engineering design right-of-way costs that Indianapolis should be, in our opinion, participating in. So we will continue doing that. I think those applications are due in the fall. We're in the fall, but sometime over the next couple of months. But we would recommend going ahead and selecting GAI, approving this contract so that we can, there is no contract, I'm sorry, approving their selection. We'll negotiate a contract with them and get that signed and approved and start that process.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the GAI project number R210798.00 as presented by the town manager.
I second. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion concerning this project?
I have a couple of comments about it. I think the council knows that I was not pleased with GAI's work initially on this, and when this was presented to us, I've spoken to Grant about this and other council, but I think the work on this diagram needs a lot more work, and I've been assured that's going to happen with public input. Grant, you made the comment that this was put out for RFP, when in fact it was not put out for an RFP, correct?
Well, we sent it to selected firms.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And the drawing that you have shown tonight, that is, this is not going to be the final product, correct?
It's conceptual of what we want to accomplish. Doesn't mean every aspect will be done as shown on the drawing.
Okay, all right. So I am going to vote in favor of it. I've been told the management and some of the employees of GAI have changed since they first came to us. Is that correct as well, Grant?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So just those comments that I have concerns, but the group that Grant has put together, and I also value Grant's scores and all this too, but I have some concerns about this group, but we'll.
Yeah, thank you.
Go and move forward and see what happens from there. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments? I'd like to make one in relationship to what we're seeing on a daily basis now with inflation, because if this thing's going to, you know, it's going to take 18 months to put together, and if we have a substantial change in scope, or change in, and just as far as, this is related to public safety and walkability, you're correct?
I would agree with that, yes.
Standpoint, how are we going to handle, you know, large overruns on something like this?
Sure. So there is a process through the MPO by which you can go back and request additional funding. So as that design progresses, we can go back and request for.
Okay, good.
Additional money. We have voted for other communities in that regard over the years, Speedway has. Typically, they're not a problem if staff approves of those. My guess is we will see that in this, because the prices put together were last.
Right.
Fall, when we applied. Things have changed drastically over the past year.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So my question is, you had made a comment about Indianapolis and them putting money into this. Do we know, I mean, this is their street, clearly.
Yes.
And so we're making improvements to that. What do we know that their abilities of putting funds into it as well, too? So it's not just left on us.
Right. So we will apply for those funds, and then we need to put that political pressure on that fund, that application for funding.
Right. I concur with Eileen. I think that Indianapolis has shown that they're patchworking, and it's somewhat literal and whatever you want to call it, but they're patchworking, they're not paving, they're not actually doing new construction, replacement construction, they're just putting Band-Aids on problems. And we have some other issues. We have 25th Street. We have, you know, Lynn Hurst's pay several years ago, but you're already starting to see a few cracks here and there, and you see it at Cunningham near 21st Street. There's some other, they are responsible for those rows, and we're not seeing, in my opinion, we're not seeing adequate maintenance and long-term improvement. And I think we need to push for that. I think the investment we're making here, what I heard you say was they earmarked $1 million for our county.
$2 million.
$2 million, okay.
Yes, for the county.
We're trying, we're going to take.
$300,000.
A sixth of that.
Yeah.
And.
If not a little more.
I'm sure everybody else was wanting to take at least a sixth of it, too. So we just need to put pressure on them in that regard. The other thing I was going to say is that this is to improve pedestrian. Any of us that drive on Crawfordsville Road, sometimes you gasp when you see a person stranded out in the middle of the street or somewhere else, and I think that's great to make improvements in its way. And most of the folks that seem to be, when you see that wheelchair in front of holes on Crawfordsville Road, that scares you to death, this will help a lot of that. This is really people that don't necessarily have cars, excuse me, cars, and that's a good thing to help them. So I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, there's definitely a need in terms of safety in relationship to Crawfordsville Road. The other objective, of course, would be to slow people down. I mean, we've got people going 50 miles an hour and blowing past me at 40 like I'm standing still. So I think a lot of that has to do with speed, and if there's any way that we can build that into some of the changes that are going to take place, but.
And the other thing I was going to mention, I agree with Counselor Lindsay in terms of making sure we get good design work here and some other things. I think we have a master planning process that we've embarked on and taken into account. Some of the planning that happens there needs to be incorporated into this design if we can help it, and vice versa.
Agreed. Yep. Yeah, the comprehensive plan should be adopted in the first quarter of next year, so that can really guide us on some of this design work, I think.
Okay. I think there's no other further discussion of a motion. We already got the motion on, and so we're good on that. So I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving engineering selection, request for proposal for Crawfordsville Road, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next is the approval of assignment of a contract, Ray's Trash Service. Grant?
Thank you. So if you're unaware, last Thursday, Ray's was purchased by Waste Management. We have a contract with Ray's that expires in December 31 of 2024 for the collection of our residential trash and recycling. So Waste Management, now that they've acquired that company, acquires all of their contracts, they have requested that we make an assignment of that contract through this letter, which needs to be signed by the council president. I know, Bob, you reviewed this letter. Did you have any concerns?
I did not, and the agreement signed with Ray's Trash specifically calls for this type of an assignment. It's very common in the industry, so.
Okay.
The only other comment I would have is that they've made it very clear to us that the changes currently will be new trucks, change of logos, they might have to trade out totes over the next six to eight months, because all those are branded as Ray's. They still plan to continue the same schedule, the same collection times. We generally have the same contact persons, so Rob Wetnide is very familiar with them. When we have issues, Ray's has been fairly responsive and dealt with those things as quickly as they can, and we do receive those kind of complaints fairly often. People care about that, and we appreciate that. So we don't expect that that's going to drop off, but we will have to stay in contact with them and make sure it doesn't drop off. And then in the late summer or early fall of 2024, we will be putting together a RFP for this service.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the assignment of the contract from Ray's Trash Service to Waste Management.
Second.
Okay, again, a motion, and Eileen seconded it. Is there any other discussion concerning Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the assignment of the contract, Ray's Trash Service to Waste Management, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item, the approval of a customer agreement. I want to table item six for changes that will be taking place. So we'll move on to item seven, ordinance number 1361. Brad?
Sir.
It's all yours.
Under our new stormwater general permit, item has required us to update our construction and post-construction ordinance. Tonight, I have Nancy Cho with Westler Engineering. She drafted all this up, so she's here to answer any of your questions.
So while she's approaching, I do know that we did accept these changes to our ordinance. I think provided a copy. Jacob, did you get that? So it'll be signed if you approve it this evening.
Okay. Would you like to tell the public some of the changes that take place here?
Yes. There's basically three changes that we've updated the ordinance with. Firstly, as Brad mentioned, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management has changed their regulations, and so Speedway needs to change their ordinance in order to correctly reference that and adopt any changes to that language. So that would be the construction stormwater general permit, which was previously known as Rule Five to developers. Secondly, Speedway has always reviewed according to the City of Indianapolis drainage standards, but that wasn't explicitly mentioned in the ordinance, and so we've incorporated that in to reference it in the text. And then thirdly, the application and review fees and post-construction inspection fees are now in the ordinance as well, so that Speedway is able to recoup the costs associated with the review. So that review is in terms of both sediment and erosion control review, and then also drainage review to make sure that any new development isn't overloading your stormwater system and that the correct detention is applied.
So Brad is our MS4 Coordinator. You're okay with these changes?
Yes, yes, I am.
So my question.
Motion.
Yeah, I want to go ahead and help for a motion.
Move that we approve ordinance number 1361.
I second. Again, motion and a second. I'll open it up for discussion. Given those changes, how are you going to notify any developer that is in the process of developing? Is he subject to those changes right now?
Yes, and Westler Engineering is assisting with that plan review, and we've already had several developments reviewed under the new state permit. And so as part of the MS4 program, there is an educational effort to get this information on the website. We have plan review forms available so that developers know what's required, and then there'll be additional education rolling out throughout the permit term.
So Brad, will you be doing the enforcement of this, or?
Myself and Robert Stevens.
Okay. So all the development out of Founder Square, making sure that they're up to, up to speed on what needs to take place?
Yes, they are. Yes.
I have a question. City of Indianapolis has a lot of good things going for it. I struggle with what they do in public works and what they do in some other areas of public works in general. Why are we using them as, I think I know, but I want to make the public to know, why are we using them as a standard?
When I came on board and started working with the town, that's the way it had been done. And then also there is, you know, when you're talking about stormwater, you know, you're discharging to Indianapolis, Indianapolis is discharging to you, and so it does make sense to have the same runoff requirements for development.
Is, but it's equal or greater to the state's requirements or Fed's requirements?
It is more stringent than the minimum required by the state, and I think that, you know, that makes sense for as much pavement as there is. And so you're talking about, you know, not allowing that system to be overloaded with stormwater volume.
Right.
When you, when you are more stringent.
So does that include the repair in the specifications for repair of stormwater lines?
No. These regulations only come into play for development that disturbs more than an acre of soil.
Right.
And so, you know, that could be redevelopment, but mostly it would be new development of that size.
So if we had a quarter-mile sewer or an eighth of a mile sewer, and we have options of either replacing that sewer or lining that sewer, it doesn't fall into that?
You'd have to multiply out the area, but yeah, anything that would be lined would not fall under this. And then if you did open-cut it and disturb an acre, then yes, it would be subject to these regulations. But when you don't add additional impervious surface, you don't have to do anything in terms of detention.
Thank you.
I've got to ask an obvious question, but has our town attorney reviewed this?
Yes, I have.
And you're fine with the way it's written?
I am. Any questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other questions. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 1361, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks, Brad. Thanks. Next is Jacob. I approve of claims.
Claims presented to you represent those made from August 6th through September 9th, and I'm happy to take any questions or would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the claims as presented by our clerk treasurer this evening.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the claims. Hearing, you're ready? Okay. All is in favor of approving the claims as submitted by the Town Clerk Treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next is our utility adjustments.
Adjustments represent the same time period. There's a couple of late fee adjustments and a securable credit. That's all we have.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the adjustments presented to us by clerk treasurer.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second. Utilities adjustments. Any discussion on the adjustments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the utility adjustments as submitted by the Town Clerk Treasurers, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next is a report from our department supervisor, our chief, Chuck Ovechek Church.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to let the council know and the citizens of Speedway that we're going to be losing Marcia Chapel, one of our control operators. She's been with the department for 32 years. She has decided to retire and go enjoy her life at this point. So we wish nothing but the best for Marcia. Marcia's served as a control operator. At one point, she served as the communications coordinator, so we just wanted to recognize Marcia's service to the town and thank her for all that she's done. Next of all, we have this weekend, September 17th, will be our fall version of Community Shreddit Day and recycling, our electronics recycling. That will be at the old police station, currently the fire department, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. For, just as a reminder, for those bringing shredding material, it's $5 donation for a shredding box, and if they have any old electronic equipment, old TVs, there is a $20 fee for dropping those off. And there's also a pharmaceutical drop that day for anybody that has old medications. So, and just as a reminder, we do have a drop box in our lobby for anyone that has old pharmaceuticals that they need to drop off. And just as an update, related to Marcia Chapel, we are currently taking applications for communications coordinator, communications control operator to replace her. So, and we've also are in the process of trying to fill three vacant officer positions. We're going through the process of that. We have two very strong candidates at this point that are going through the polygraph and background, and we hope that we can make an offer to those two individuals here in the very near future. And that is all I have tonight.
Do we have any questions for Chuck?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our communications director, Cheryl. Next is our communications director, Cheryl.
Hi, council. I've been here a little over a year and I still get nervous every time I have to come up here and speak every month. So we're going to start with the events. Some of the events scheduled here in town, as Chief Upchurch just noted, Saturday, September 17th is the Fall Shredded Day. Also on Saturday, September 17th is the Speedway Chamber of Commerce Jazz Fest. That is from 6:30 to 8:30 at the SRC Parking Lot next to Barbecue and Bourbon. We have on September 16th and 17th is the OSCNA Annual Community Sale that will take place 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It covers the area of Main Street to Lynnhurst and then West 10th Street to Crawfordsville. September 22nd is a town employee appreciation barbecue that Grant is kind of stareheading, just an appreciation for the employees of the town. Thursday, September 22nd is the Chamber Taste of Speedway. It's being held at DeLara from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. There is a cost, $20 at the door, but if you buy in advance, it's $15. And I believe their tickets are still available at B. Aaron Designs and Founder's Grounds.
When is that one, Cheryl?
I'm sorry?
When is that one, please?
That one is Thursday, September 22nd.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. September 29th, that is, sorry, do I have that wrong? No, that is also on a Thursday, sorry. September 29th, Thursday, is the Speedway Public Safety and Service Community Day. Tammy from Parks will speak some details on that. Friday, October 7th is USAC's Oktoberfest. I'm still waiting on details for that, so we'll be pushing that out as we get a little bit closer. Saturday, October 15th, Speedway United Methodist Church is having a fall festival, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And it looks like that's offering food and crafts. October 29th, Saturday, the Lions Club Halloween Costume Contest and Park-sponsored Truck or Treat. Again, Tammy will give you some details on that one. And then December 7th on a Wednesday is Light the Night on Main Street. Some noteworthy items that I wanted to share, the SCTV cable crew has been filming the high school football games for a while, but they're now offering a live link that if you can't make it to the game and you want to watch, that's available. We're pushing that out on the town Facebook page and the town website. Just a reminder that heavy trash days are this week, September 13th, 14th, and 15th. Again, that is emailed to residents and then it's also on the town Facebook page and website. We shared an update on the BNO Trail Connection. The Eagle Creek Bridge was set last week. They anticipate December, a substantial part of the work should be completed enough that it is usable. And there's some really cool pictures that Speedway Trails has been providing out on their Facebook page, if anyone wants to go out and take a look at that. Also a reminder, the town is working and Grant's probably going to speak on this a little bit, but the town is working with American Structure Point on the Comprehensive Plan Project, which basically, as you know, is the roadmap for the future growth of Speedway. We're currently gathering community input for that project and there's a couple ways that you can submit your input. One is a survey and you can find that online on the town website or Facebook page. And then we also will have representatives in person that you can give your input or your opinions or your wants on a couple of the events that I mentioned above. The Jazz Fest on the 17th of September, Taste of Speedway, September 22nd, and then will also be available at the Public Safety Community Day on September 29th. Let's see, and the last item that I have, this is from the Arts Council. There's an opportunity to be involved in another Speedway Arts project. It's going to be a mosaic image that will be made up of individual images of people, points of interest, or elements that the community thinks represent Speedway. The mosaic will be located here at the Speedway Municipal Center on the wall out at the north entrance. We're in the process of collecting at least 30,000 images, so this is going to take a while. But when these smaller images are collaged together, it will make a larger image and we're focusing on making it the logo of the town. There's two ways that the community can submit images. If you go to the Speedway Arts page, it's @SpeedwayArts on their Facebook page, you can submit your photos, upload them to a Google Docs, or you can email them in to, as a JPEG, which you can just take it from your phone, to SpeedwayArts@gmail.com. And in your subject title, please put Speedway Photo Mosaic Project. And this is a public image, so please use family-friendly images. That is all I have. Any questions?
Hearing none.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Todd.
Good evening. I'll just give you a few updates on projects and opportunities I've been working on the last few weeks. One is, one that hasn't had a lot of activity, it's been around for a while, the Will Shaw Hotel Project. I've continued to have dialogue with a representative from there. They're still working on getting financing. They think that they have a potential lender, but they don't have a term sheet yet, but they still are very optimistic that they will get one and they're continuing to talk to other lenders as well. They indicated to me that they meet every two or three days with a lender that they know or a lender that they've been introduced to. So they're still very positive that they'll get the deal done. Also recently met with Praxair, toured that facility, very, very high-tech activity there. They're considering an expansion. They've been working with the state, I think, for some time on a project there. Could be as much as $55 million capital investment and 50 new jobs averaging about 30 bucks an hour. Very good jobs. So kind of working through that project. So hopefully we'll be successful and bring some new jobs to the Praxair facility. Also have been working with the Skanel folks at the Will Shaw Apartments on their vacant 5,000 square foot space. They, you know, it was designed for a retail user. They're actually talking to an office user called Performance Validation, which would be headquarters. They're a life science validation firm. It's 10 jobs that could grow to 20, but it's a headquarters, so they have all their executives would be there. So these jobs would average more than $50,000 a year if we are successful in getting them in there. They are, this would be the highest-priced facility that they're looking at. You know, I think it's their preferred location, but it's certainly the most expensive. We've been working with them on potentially getting them some of the parking spaces in the project that are designed to be public dedicated to them between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00. That was going to help that project, but they're still, you know, they're still in negotiations. So it's certainly, certainly not a done deal at this time, but one that would be, you know, bringing some additional workforce to Main Street as well. Also, last week, we had a very interesting tour of the Rolls Royce Heritage Trust Allison Branch Museum, if you will. It's very STEM-focused. They bring in a lot of students to get them excited about, you know, really engineering. There's a lot of hands-on exhibits in there. Very, very interesting, you know, that a lot of what we saw was created in the old Allison Plant One there on Main Street and they love to figure out a way to get back in there, kind of coming full circle, but we'll see where that one goes. I think there's some potential for them to collaborate with, you know, maybe the IMS Museum or, you know, maybe the folks that are looking at the old Allison Plant One as well. So we'll stay tuned for that. They did have kind of a proposal that they shared with us that I emailed out to everybody earlier today, so take a look at that. It was, didn't have a lot of detail in it, but it was kind of a high-level overview of what they're kind of thinking about. Also recently had a conversation with a group that's looking to purchase the old antique mall on Main Street, kind of wanting to get some ideas of kind of what the town was looking to go in there and, you know, I think they're pretty, pretty open to suggestions and, you know, have some ideas of their own. It's not, I think they have a contract, but there's, it's certainly not a finalized deal yet there as well. Also, just kind of walked into the, you know, we've had some complaints about, you know, the restaurants having trouble, their workers having trouble finding parking spaces when there's, you know, activity, you know, maybe closing down Main Street or anytime there's increased activity, sometimes they have issues with parking for their workers. I had had a preliminary meeting with Doug Bowles from the IMS who had indicated that the press parking lot there off of Gate One might be available. They would be open to talking about, you know, having that lot available during events. And I just took a quick poll of O'Reilly's and Tacos and Tequila and Dawson's about, you know, hey, would that be helpful to you all? And they were all very favorable to that. So we'll continue to talk to Doug about that. I'm hoping to get some kind of regularly scheduled meetings with him now that the race season's wrapped up this weekend. Also had a nice meeting with TNH folks that are developing the senior housing out in Founder Square. You know, they're very excited about that project. We were able to solve an issue. I think there were some misunderstandings from their pre-con meeting and I think some of that may be because I think they've changed contractors during the process about the requirements for using copper in their, in their system. And they brought that to my attention and I was able to get clarification on what that was. Jacob was helpful with me on that one as well. So that was, that was a good meeting and we actually, I think, cleared some things up for them. So they appreciated that as well and they're very, very excited about the project. And also we were able to get them, we'd had, I think Cheryl and I have both had folks call in and say, how do we get on the waiting list? And we were, I think the management company for them was maybe not responding to people that would call in, but now I think we've, we've been able to get them to start at least a waiting list. It's too early for them to take applications. I don't think their construction is going to be done, you know, probably for another year or so. So they are, you know, going to be at least responding and taking, taking a waiting list. So that's just a few of the, few of the projects and companies that have been working with the last few weeks. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions? Anybody has about any of those?
Like, you know, Hampton seems to be going up and now they're painting it, I guess. And what's the completion date on that? Do you remember?
I want to say second quarter of '23.
'23?
It's what I have in the back of my mind. It might be, it might be a little earlier.
That's a pretty massive building.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was 7,000 square foot of conference area, I believe?
I was thinking five, but you might be right about that. Yeah.
That's great. Yeah, that's, that will really help out in terms of rooms.
About the 1,400 block of Main Street? Did you report on that? I missed it?
13.
1,300?
1,300 blocks, pardon me.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're all sold, they're, the retail spaces all leased out. I think they'll have La Peep and Vine and Table open by the end of the year. So, yeah, it's, it's been real, been a real success.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much, Todd.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next is our fur chief, Bob Fishburne.
Hey, Bob. Evening, council. I want to start by sharing with you a commendation that was written for a crew by their off-duty officer. So it wasn't self-serving, but it's kind of a neat story. On August the 23rd, Engine 89 witnessed a woman in cardiac arrest. This, this run actually came out as difficulty breathing and when they got there, she was talking to them, telling them she was having trouble breathing, those things. She then went into cardiac arrest. The, the crew and the medic crew that got there after them, their initial appraisal and getting a gel airway in without the medics there saved this woman's life. And so I wanted to share with you, that was engineer Aaron Steffi, that was private Jake Duman, private Zach Rorark, and riding out as an officer that day, it was David Turpin. So we've put the commendation in their file and I just wanted to share with you, that's a really, really good, good story. So also want to thank Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola today did lunch for police, fire, EMS at their facility on 25th Street to recognize the commemoration of 9/11. They do it every year as close to that date as they can. Before our next meeting, we will be in full gearing up for fire prevention. We are beginning to contact the schools and coordinate with them. We are going to remain outside again this year at the request of Dr. Trevely. I think this will be the last year. I just think they want to be cautious during that flu season and we're, we're just, we're going to work with them to get the kids out in coats where we can show them equipment and they can at least do some things in their classrooms afterward where we're not putting more people into the school system. So that is the month of October. Recently, at the request of President Noblet, met with John Merritt just to go over some of the things that we can be doing as a, as a town with Airbnbs and how those business licenses and how we can do fire prevention enforcement and some of those things. So we met, we're looking into what we're able to do in, within the laws in Indiana. So, and what other communities are doing to do that. We are currently waiting to hear back on two active grants. One, we submitted to Marathon in the middle of the summer and one with the Indiana Fire Chiefs Association, which, you know, was open to a lot of different departments, but we're waiting to hear back on those two. And last but not least, this Thursday at Station 89, and all of you are welcome to come if you'd like, we're going to be feeding 100 hungry football players, cheerleaders, and coaches because Friday night's homecoming and we've now for 10 years, the local 416 and Speedway Fire feed them spaghetti, get them all carved up so that, you know, they can, they can go have a big game on Friday. So, and you really are welcome to come if you'd like, you know? We won't charge you more than $10 a plate. So, no, that's, that's all free and paid for by the union. So if, if you don't have any questions, any of you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
I'm good. Thank you, Bob. Next up is our Parks and Recreation. Next up is our Parks and Recreation, Tammy Smith.
Good evening. First of all, I want to mention our Speedway youth basketball registrations are still open. This program is for boys and girls in third through sixth grade. The season begins the week after fall break. The deadline to register the girls is this weekend. Their games start sooner, but we have to have them all registered by the end of this weekend in order to get their uniforms back in time before the first game. The deadline to register the boys is October 7th. So just want to let everybody know to get your kids registered so you don't miss out on this season's basketball. We had a last minute, a couple of last minute concerts actually added on. We had one last week under the radar and this week, under the radar, a couple of their band members are going to be heading up concerts slash good old fashioned jam session. So we're inviting the public who can play guitar, drums, whatever, they could bring their own instruments, come out and just have a good fun evening this Thursday. It'll be our last concert of the season. Because it is getting darker sooner, we are changing that time from six to eight. This week it'll be six to eight. So hopefully people can come out and enjoy a good old fashioned jam session. People can sing and just interact, have a good interactive evening. We want to thank our sponsors for a record year of 11 concerts this year. So Speedway Lions Club, Westler Engineering, Funday's Ice Cream and Sweets, Alliance Insurance Company, Daredevil Brewing, The Miller Family, and Philip Faust with Wykurt Realtors. I want to throw out also, every concert, we have a couple that comes, Randy and Mary Jo Fox. I don't know if anyone knows them, but this month, I believe it's the 19th, they're celebrating their 65th wedding anniversary. So it's, it's fun to interact with them every week and I'll miss them once the concerts are done, but look forward to having them back next year. Also this Thursday is our last market in Meadowwood Park. Our market expanded a little bit this year. We did have produce plants, honey, baked goods, handcrafted gift items, jewelry, and various forms of art. We also had community groups on hand educating the public and raising funds for their causes. We had Noble Centers, Speedway Trails, Speedway Animal Rescue, Speedway Library, and Breathe Easy Speedway. We continue to receive interest in the market and so we're looking ahead to next year. We're excited at the possibility of adding microgreens as well as French baked goods such as baguettes. The microgreens vendor may bring a few this week. So if anybody's interested in trying those out, come early because I think he said he'd only have maybe six to a dozen. So I did get a sampling last week and tried it out for the first time. It was really good. An update on the West Indy Art and Music Festival that we had August 20th. It was a huge success. We had well over 1,000 people that attended. All the art and craft vendors indicated that they did very well. We had one food truck completely run out of food. C's Treats was there, they completely ran out of their desserts. The other food truck ran out of their most popular items and almost ran out of everything else. We entertained, we were entertained by seven different community and concert bands throughout the afternoon. And West Indy Winds Community Band is who partnered with us and they took care of getting all those bands. And they have indicated to me that they've got more bands interested, more bands than what we have slots for. So we're looking forward to hopefully bringing that event back next year. We have a, a post-meeting this Wednesday to go over and maybe start planning for next year. As Cheryl mentioned, this Thursday, September 29th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Leonard Park will be the Speedway Public Safety and Service Community Day. There'll be a touch of truck area, some music, and lots of community engagement. While supplies last, the police department's going to be giving out hot dogs and chips. The fire department's going to do bottles of water. And Funday's is donating three tubs of ice cream. I did send you all emails this evening. You probably haven't seen it yet, but I am requesting that maybe the councilors can dip the ice cream and serve to the community, hopefully, if you're available. We would love to have you out there.
I think I'm the fallback.
Yep, Grant is the fallback, so.
Prevent me from dipping ice cream.
We will have other community groups, businesses on hand, hopefully some of the youth leagues. We just want it to be a really fun, large community engagement opportunity. It's not, people aren't going to be selling anything. It's just providing information, education, and engagement. And given an opportunity to thank our public safety and other town services. October 29th, 5:00 to 6:30 is our trunk or treat. It'll be immediately after the Lions Club costume contest. We're kind of not necessarily partnering, but having those two events together, looking forward to that. So we would love any businesses or groups, again, interested in participating, decorating their trunk. Then they would provide their own candy for the kids. Last year we had approximately 800 people show up to that event. Wednesday, December 7th, light the night, we'll have further details probably at the next meeting for that. And the last thing I have is last month, I touched on some of our park rules and ordinance violations, how we've had a step up of that. Pardon me, we continue to have issues, but we have implemented a few things that I think have helped a little bit. And we added some temporary signage in the east parking lot regarding cars parking there throughout the night. We've had instances where like the whole back row is full of cars well into the night. I did put up some temporary signage and there's hardly any cars. Most evenings I'm not seeing any or one will come in, but they immediately leave.
Which park is that?
That's Meadowwood Park. In addition, I put up a sign at Meadowwood Park about people not being in the park after dark. And that sign is sitting between the playground and the bathrooms. So we have noticed that people are going home a little bit sooner and there's not quite as many people in the parks. But we're still having issues, so we're, we're just going to keep stepping up on that. I'm working with code enforcement and the Parks Board. We're going to update our ordinances to make them clearer and more concise. We'll send it to Bob for his review and then once we get the okay from him, we'll present it to the town council for hopefully adoption to make these slight changes and adjustments for our ordinances. Also working with the police department, you know, to, to help us with these ordinance violations. And one of the things I want to do for them is kind of in a simplified form, put some of our rules and then include the actual ordinance number. So the police officers don't have to search for that. They'll have it readily available, maybe have it on a laminated card or something that I would like to give to the police department. I'm continuing to send emails on a weekly basis to those who reserve the shelters, reminding them of our park rules and telling them that we are citing violators. I think that's helped a little bit, but Sunday of Labor Day weekend, we did have a large party in there that had 22 violations. Joe Kramer indicated to me that I just tied for the most violations they ever gave one person. So I was, too bad I couldn't find just one more, but that's okay. They had 18 vehicles, they drove into the park, they drove by the playgrounds, they drove around people, they parked across the sidewalk that was the ADA access to the bathroom, and every one of those vehicles drove into the park right next to the sign that says no vehicles in the park. So we'll keep doing what we can. We do get myself, dispatch, and Mike, our maintenance supervisor, receive calls almost on a weekly basis with complaints from homeowners. And I just want them to know that we are implementing some ideas, we are working on it, it just takes time. And hopefully our goal will have all this in place by next spring and maybe we'll see some improvements in that. And that's all I have. Any questions?
How many cameras do we have in the parks?
We actually had more installed and I'm not really sure exactly how many, although I look, I see there's eight.
Thirty-five.
No, it, I think, I think it's 15, between the two parks. I think we have 15.
Actually, I think I agree with Grant. I think there's more than that.
Yeah.
We have a, a new one coming in that's going to, we have one that catches that east parking lot in Meadowwood now, but we're having a better one installed very recently. So we're working, we're actively working on that right now.
And we've really upgraded the quality so that they can actually get license plates and...
All the cameras are better quality than what we had last year.
Fantastic.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you. Next up, Brad Sloan, Public Works. You got to cover it all.
Good evening again. We'll start the wastewater treatment plant. Business as usual. Plant treated 109 million gallons, sent to Big Eagle Creek last month. The plant's new master control center for the, in the return building has been installed and is working great. The new boiler for the digester is being installed and should be hopefully online tomorrow. At the water plant, business as usual. The plant treated 70 million gallons of water in August. The staff has been painting wells. On the leak on the, on, at 10th and Lenhurst, the plant today was set up traffic control. They will get the road cut tomorrow, open it up and repair the leak. English and vet, excavating is helping with this. Street department, business as usual, cleaning sewers in the Chapel Hill and Farley additions. Yard waste programs continuing and they're getting prepared for leak pickup season. Street sweeping as often as possible through thoroughfares in neighborhood streets and patching potholes. That's all I have.
Any questions for Brad?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next is our town managers' report. Grant?
I do have a couple of items. One, Cheryl already mentioned, the comprehensive plan process is ongoing. We really encourage residents to get out, take that survey. It takes 15 minutes, really provides us good input into what they want to see in the community so that it can be included in that planning process. The steering committee or review committee will be meeting again late this month or the 1st of October. And we should, we are on pace to have the plan adopted and completed by about February. So there's a lot of work left to do, but it has kicked off, input has been good. I think we have received over 400 responses to the survey, which is very good. I think we're hoping to have double or triple that, but we will, we'll definitely take 400 at this point. So we're trying to promote that to get people to share their thoughts and input. The other item that I have is, as you know, we have through the budget process, been discussing the issuance of a small amount of debt to be used on some special projects. This evening, we discussed a, a couple of different options. We would like to approve an agreement with Barnes and Thornburg to assist us with that general obligation bond. I have the proposal that I've shown to you. They will charge fees of 25 to 30. I think the council made it clear and the motion should be a part of that, that we would like that fee to be 25,000. This bond will be used for potentially some gateway improvements out at the interstate. There has been a study ongoing over the past year. I think we are ready to, to at least implement some of that. I think the council felt that was a good use of those funds. We also might look at some additional road, road improvements depending on how much money we have left from that small issuance. It will be a two or a three-year term. I think we'll do about a two to two and a half million dollar bond and we'll see how that process goes. I will say, once this agreement is approved, we will be moving forward fairly quickly on that process. Probably we'll have bond ordinance and some other documents for the September 26th meeting. And then we'll have items on the agenda for it, most likely all the way through the end of the year with a closing hopefully before the markets close in mid-December. So there's a lot of work to be done, but approval of this Barnes and Thornburg agreement this evening will get us along in that process. So I'll answer any questions that you might have, but we're looking for a motion and approval of that agreement.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request by the town manager to execute an agreement with Barnes and Thornburg for an amount not to exceed 25,000 for the bond that he described.
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, or is there any questions? I take it for Grant, relationship to this bond. Hearing none? I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All of us in favor of the Barnes and Thornburg bond appraisal or approval, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All as opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Grant. Anything else, Grant?
No, and I'll have this agreement for you to sign here now that you've approved that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Next up would be Counselor Gary Pedago.
I want to make some comments tonight in regard to a rumor that came to my attention about three weeks ago, maybe closer to four. And it concerns the roughly six acres of property located between Cunningham Park subdivision and the B and O Trail. In late 2018, I believe, or early 2019, the Redevelopment Commission, of which Tim Gropp was the director at that time, purchased that property, had auction for the sole purpose of making sure that it didn't find its way into the hands of some developer who would build apartments. I think we all agree we have enough apartments in Speedway and we definitely didn't want and don't want apartments being built, you know, on that piece of property. During that time, Tim did some initial drawings, some thought processes of what we could do with that property, but it's never went any further than that. And here about three, four weeks ago, I started getting emails and phone calls from constituents, but also from citizens of our town, expressing concern. Hey, I hear we're going to build houses back there. I hear we're going to build apartments or, in one case, senior living. Those were all thoughts that Tim had a few years back for that property, but conceptual only. There have been other suggestions made about possibly a new park there or possibly moving our street department there. But I want to make it clear, as I've explained to the folks that I've spoken with in regard to this rumor, that the Town of Speedway, the Redevelopment Commission, and this council in particular have had no discussions regarding that parcel of land at all for years, really. It's never come before this council in my time, which is over two years now. So I want to try to, to put it to bed. Nothing's happening with that property. Todd, you and I will talk about that down the road, I'm sure. The Redevelopment Commission don't want to hold on to it forever and there's got to be a, a proper use for it. But put your mind at ease, citizens and constituents of Cunningham Park, that nothing is going to go, nothing's going to be developed without you knowing about it well in advance. There would be a Cunningham Park Association meeting, maybe just a Town of Speedway open hearings and meetings of some sort to get people's input. None of that has been even thought about. There's been too many other things, too many other fires to deal with. COVID, not the least of which that we dealt with, we all dealt with for a couple of years. So that being said, that's my comments for tonight. Put your mind at ease. It's nothing but a rumor. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next up, Counselor Aileen Fisher.
I just want to, you know, make sure everyone comes out to the park, Meadowwood Park, for our last concert for this year. The concerts have been really very nice. The weather's been great and there's just been a lot of people out there enjoying it. So it sounds like it'll be fun this last Thursday, so.
Thank you. Counselor David Lindsay.
Nothing to report this evening.
Yeah? Now I'll go to Counselor Gary Rakes.
Nothing to report.
Last up, I just want to mention that, again, this town is in the process of this comprehensive plan, just like Grant said. And it's very important that we get the input of citizens from the Town of Speedway. And in taking the survey, that if you feel like some of those questions didn't answer or bring to light points that you want to make, feel free to attach a letter. You know, we are here to, you know, get the information from the public and we don't want to direct any response, but we, we want to definitely find out, you know, what the feeling is of the residents of the Town of Speedway and what they feel is important to the town to get accomplished. So I just want to bring that to light. I also want to make note of, two weeks ago, we had an accident... that to light. I also want to make note of, two weeks ago, we had an accident at Lenhurst and Crawford Zoll Road. It was a Sunday morning. And I just want to thank the firefighters that participated in trying to save that gentleman's life. He was going westbound on Crawford Zoll Road, and he ended up head-on into a, the stop sign pole. And he passed away probably before he even made it. But it was really gratifying to see our firefighters working on him, trying to revive him, and putting 100% effort into getting that, giving that person a fighting chance, making it to the hospital. Sadly, he passed away, but I have a feeling that he, he basically, that's what caused the accident to begin with. But it was good to see our firefighters in action and, and the police department, the way that they controlled the scene that made it safe during that, that whole event. It was early in the morning, and there really wasn't very much traffic, but it was really interesting to see our firefighters in work, and the police department working and had control of the, of the whole scene at that point in time. Thank you, Bob. Pass on the, my thoughts on that. And Chuck, appreciated that your people out there handling the scene for that.
Thank you.
I have nothing else to say, and other than it is 8:11, and close this meeting. Thank you.
Hey, Cheryl?